Time's is two o'clock.
Let's get going. What's the holdup?
Call ahead to the Sparks City Council Meeting of eight twenty-eight, two thousand seventeen.
Mayor Martini?
Here.
Council members Abbott?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Byby?
Here.
Dear?
Here.
Acting City Attorney Iiding?
Here.
And City Manager Driscoll?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Next is opening ceremony. We have invocation speaker Pastor Barb West.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Would you bow your heads in prayer with me, please? Our heavenly Father, what a privilege it is to come to your throne of grace with Pastor Gino and this fine council. We just ask you, Lord, even as you've instructed us, that you would depart wisdom to us and enable them to know exactly what all is going on in your mind so that they would be in one accord. We pray, Lord, that as they lead the business of our city, that you would guide them, direct them, protect them, and enable them to make good choices for all of us. We thank you too for all of the elected and appointed officials in our city. Thank you that we're a city on the move and that things are building and going so well. Thank you for all of the construction, and we pray people would have patience with all of that. Thanks for our police force and our first responders and our firefighters who put themselves on the line for us each day. And so now, Lord, we just ask that you would hear our prayer and be with us all. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Was that a sign, Lawson?
There must have been. That's a good sign.
Okay, if you'd remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Ms. Byby, would you lead us?
It's an honor. Please show me in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we have public comment is the next. If you want to speak under number four, public comment, please fill out one of these cards and give it to our clerk. And we'll go right down the line as we receive them, and you'll have, each have three minutes. I have Hannah Hobiar. Come on up. How do you pronounce that?
Hobiar.
Hobiar, okay. Go ahead, have a seat, and go ahead. You got three minutes, dear.
So my name is Hannah Hobiar. I have a nonprofit called Project Bear Hugs. I am currently doing a drive, donation drive, for all the victims of the Texas, the hurricane right now, as well as Louisiana and the states around that that have been affected by any sort of disaster. I have a big drive happening on this Thursday at the Atlantis from eleven to seven, and we are collecting any sort of donation, new or gently used stuffed animals, blankets, pillows, pillowcases, water, pet food, any sort of thing that people need that, I mean, money is, helps a lot, but they also need the stuff that happens that they don't get after everyone leaves. So if the City of Sparks can get behind us, that would be fantastic. I'm trying to make this the biggest drive that I can. I am partnering with the American Red Cross on Thursday. We're doing a combined donation drive, which I'm really excited about. And I don't know if you guys have seen, I'm sure you guys have, the hurricane in Texas is absolutely horrific. I've been doing this for a long time. I've never seen a storm like this, and it is horrific. There's over thirty thousand people in a shelter right now. There's over ten thousand people stuck on the roofs of their house, and they cannot get down, and they are camping up there. They're having to keep an axe with them if they're in the attic so they can basically ax their way out of the house, out of the roof. And they are now in such desperate need that they, there's not enough people to get them off of the roof. So there's been people there for a day and a half is the longest that I've heard, that they have not had any sort of contact with anybody. There's no phone service, no power, no gas, no food, nothing. And as I heard about twenty minutes ago, is that the levees are about to break. So yeah, everyone is asked to please leave their homes. They're in, think it's Sugarland, Texas, Corpus Christi, which, I mean, that one's, they've been supposed to leave for a while now, and pretty much all the surrounding areas. So yeah.
Questions for Hannah, Ron Smith?
Hannah, what's the number they can get ahold of your organization?
They can get ahold of me at seven seven five, seven five zero, zero five three seven. Project Bear Hugs. W W W dot projectbearhugs dot com.
And you said all day at the Atlantis on Thursday?
Yes, from eleven to seven, in the west parking lot, so the one right across the street.
And you can bring anything that they think would be helpful?
Yes.
Or a lot of money?
Yes.
Hannah, thank you very much for doing what you're doing. I know they're, they're in such need down there, and it's just horrible. I watch it on TV at nighttime. It's just horrible. You're right. There's, and we all know around here how devastating water can be, and it's nothing even close to what's happening down there. So open your hearts, open your wallets, and let's try to help those folks out. Thanks. Thanks, Hannah. Okay, next I have Kathleen Shoup. Come on, Kathleen. Welcome.
Hello to all. My name is Kathleen Shoup, and I live on the east side of the Wild Creek Golf Course. I'm here to represent the Save Wild Creek movement. I truly feel that this whole project is more a ruse to get that valuable asset away from our public so that they can develop it into something other than just a high school. From my viewpoint, I saw that it was sprung upon us three and a half months ago, four months ago perhaps, and had a completion date that was supposedly to take place on August first. So they gave nobody time to even check into alternative plans. About two thousand and five, there were some developers that tried to move into the Wild Creek Golf Course and turn it into high-density housing, and we fought them off. The zoning and, and all sorts of things were against them, so we were able to do that. But now they found a way around that zoning. They found that by making it a high school, which is zoned, that they can break up that property, and then, then what? Okay, eighty, eighty acres of the two hundred and twelve available might be turned into that, that high school. And then what's going to happen to the rest? Are they going to turn it over to the City of Sparks? Are you guys going to finance all these, these wonderful utopian ideas that they have with the, the walking paths and the swimming pools and all these embellishments to make that high school look good? Are you all going to pay for it? Are we all, as, as, as the public, going to pay with our taxes? I don't know. I rather doubt it. I think that they're going to turn it over into development. And so I hate seeing these sneaky people get their way. I'm sorry. Thank you for listening.
Bill Wagner? Wagner Weiner? Come on up, sir. Welcome, sir.
I'm opposed to the rezoning of P C N seventeen zero dash zero zero three two on Los Altos Parkway. I just don't understand why you would put six acres of building on a seven point seven acre land. My biggest concern is fire and evacuation, and believe me, if it ever snowed up there during that time, it would be a disaster. And I want you to please remember that the city council unanimously disagreed with the rezoning. So I hope you'll take all this into effect when the time comes. I know the next reading will be in, the next, I think on, what, the fifteenth, is it? Will be the first reading, September?
So, members of council and mayor, the city attorney's office has received a request from the developer on this particular project that is being discussed in this public comment and has asked for a sixty-day extension in order to bring a consultant on board to try to answer some more questions from the public. So instead of the public hearing process happening during the month of September, it will be happening during the month of November. We will be sending information out, the mailings that we had done in the past for the public hearings, where we're going to actually have a mailing that goes out and explains that this is a sixty-day delay. This is a common practice for the city, working with the applicants when there are issues at home. So the public hearing that the gentleman was talking about for September will be delayed until November. It will be back, all public hearings again. Any final decision will be made by this council, so we're not short, we're not circumventing the system. We're just allowing the developer sixty days to answer questions. Thank you.
Read again. Danielle Mestry?
Property that's going to be built on Los Altos Parkway. That's my issue. I would like you to know that on Disk Drive, I'm sure you all know, there are apartment complexes already being built, that there's about twenty of them, and they're three stories high. So other than putting something where it doesn't really need to be put, I think there are plenty. I've heard constantly, well, we're growing and, and we have to, we can't meet the demand. I've gone around the city, and all of those things that the last lady had talked about in two thousand and five, when everything stopped, is started up again, and it seems like on a faster scale. So everything that's over by the Marina, those apartments are going in. You have the apartments that are already over by the Nugget. You have the hotel that was turned into a apartment complex. You have the, the other property that's over by the RV park by the Marina that's going to be apartment complexes. We already have existing apartment complexes, so my concern is that you have enough, and I know there's this urgency to fill whatever we stopped doing in two thousand and five, but I think it's time you guys take a little look and slow it down. Whether these developers are promising the moon, my kids go to school, in a school that's going to be filled to the capacity over on Los Altos at Bud Beasley because of a sixty-four unit complex. And it doesn't stop there, because once those houses behind us start going in, it will continue there too. So I think looking to the future, and whoever you think that you're getting in here into these apartment complexes, in five years, if they all leave, we're the ones left with what, with empty, empty places. We've all gone through a recession. We want our house values to go up and not go back down again. And piling all these people in here, you eventually will lead to people leaving. So that's what I got to say. That's it. Thank you. Thank you.
Wesley Griffin?
I'm Wesley Griffin. I'm here to speak in support of saving Well Creek. I'm sure you've heard all the reasons that we feel like it should be saved. We've talked about Well Creek being a flood plain. We've talked about the flight path, the traffic problems. We've talked about what a tremendous public asset that is. The cost to replace that asset would be upwards of thirty million dollars. We had Paul McKenzie at one of our groups recently, and he said that a recent refurbishment of a, of a golf course up at Lake Tahoe was like forty-six million dollars. So now, where, where could you provide your citizens with a thirty million dollar public asset for one point four million dollars? That's what's owed on it. And then that will be a free and clear public asset that will actually make money and provide our citizens with, with recreation, with a green space, with just all kinds of, part of our culture. Been around here for going on forty years. In our meetings, we've been brainstorming on ways to accomplish this. One of the recent meetings that one of your members here, Ed, was at, he brought up, he says, you know, we ought to be thinking about win-win-win. I'm sure you all remember Covert Bailey, Stephen Covey's book called, I Had a Win Friend, no, The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, and the fourth habit that he spoke of there was win-win. Well, here we're talking win-win-win, because we have at least three entities involved. We have the citizens of Washoe County. We have the school district, and you have the RSCVA. When there's a conflict like this, if people start thinking win-win, or win-win-win, as the case may be, there's tremendous opportunities, tremendous opportunities. We can save an asset to our community, a park, a golf course. We're going to need more golf courses. In the paper this morning, they're talking about almost thirty thousand new jobs coming into our area. We're going to need more golf courses. We're going to need more public green spaces. Where can you do that for one point four million dollars? We need this. We need this. And we're, we're looking at different, we're looking to try to bring different people in and talk about ways that we can work on win-win solutions. We're going to have the school board. We've had the school board there. We would invite all of you to come to our meetings. Come and talk with us. Come and hear what we have to say. We have some ideas. I was just up to the Wild Creek Regional Park today. Two hundred and fifty acres of undeveloped land up there. I don't know, you know, all the ins and outs or the workings of that, but it would seem to me that undeveloped acreage, I don't know where this works, thirty million dollars, would be a good place to maybe consider that high school. And there's a number of other places that we can look at. Come join us, and let's talk about it. Thank you.
Put them glasses on. William Gilbert, AKA Benjamin W. Creveling the Fourth? Come on up, sir. You have three minutes.
Hello. I'm here because of the history on the planning units, the forty-seven planning units. That's going to, that affects us too, because we're, you know, we got to work together with the Shasta County air. And it's throughout two thousand and five and early parts of two thousand and six, the stewardship council focuses on obtaining, organizing, organizing and analyzing sufficient amounts of data specified in the watershed plans to proceed efficiency. We're grouped the one hundred and forty, or one hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and about one thousand percent in, in total into forty-seven planning units. Within, it would be developed, described as, as in stocks. So each planning unit is one stock, and that one stock is a, has a tickler, you know, code. And each stock has got like billions of dollars into this. And so we developed forty, forty-seven planning units is quite a few units that we got to get going to planning, you know, but for the start, you know, it could be Ward, Ward one, Ward two, you know, as a start in, you know, and one planning unit is, is like I said, is a stock fund of the Great West. And, and just, just that one unit and that one stock is a lot of paperwork, and not paperwork, but for one of you guys to look into, which would bring, you know, a lot of money into our watershed plan unit and, and so forth. So today, I was able to fax to the Utilities Commission and, and Carson City, the plans and update of the, which the PG&E, you know, company was, was to talk to the Utilities Commission, you know, Utilities, because that's pretty much the, our communication and the data and, you know, so to speak, like, you know, stacked, like how stacked, how data is stacked? And then like, there's like, it's in a row, like, does it say a court date? It'd be like, it's like before the Indians' Commission forum, it's where the court dates are, it'd be laid out, but it's stacked, like, like right after another, and then time's all there and so forth. So pretty much, I got like probably six hundred different folders of data made up that I've been working for, for a good five years. And, and Spanish Springs Construction, they, they were able to bring the, bring it to the table, the, all the, you know, or bring it up to the table, all the, the stocks of the Great West, which turned into the empowerment, which empowerment went to the David Bacon pension. And so we, those are the two companies that have the recent data that you speak to. And, and then I, with the Great West, has the, the remaining, you know, fifteen year data within, you know, fifteen years, all the way back, you know, from, from nineteen thirty-one, you know, Harris stocks. So, okay, that's it. Pretty much it's start.
Wow. Anyone else? Anyone else wants to speak? Please fill out one of the cards. Okay. Seeing no more public comment, we'll move on to the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
Moved to approve the agenda.
Mr. Abbott? Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Abbott to approve. The agenda is outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Minutes. Consideration impossible approval of the minutes of the irregular Sparks City Council Meeting of August fourteenth, twenty fourteen. Any omissions, deletions, or corrections?
I move to approve the minutes from the August fourteenth, twenty seventeen City Council Meeting.
Seconded.
Announcements? We have none. Consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Okay, seeing no consent items being pulled, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
Moved to approve consent items eight point one through eight point three.
Second. Ms. Byby?
Second.
Moved, moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Byby to approve it. On to general business. Consideration of and possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of the appointment of Shelley Reed. Shelley who? Shelley Reed to the Sparks Planning Commission for the remainder of a four-year term from the following pool of applicants listed in alphabetical order: Jeff Bowling, Joshua Fink, Paul Freeman, Joshua Lee, Jennifer Martinez, and Shelley, Shelley Reed, of course. Discussion? Questions? Ms. Byby?
Ready for motion?
I can do that, too.
I move to confirm the appointment of Ms. Shelley Reed to the Sparks Planning Commission for the remainder of a four-year term through December thirty-first, twenty eighteen.
Mr. Lawson?
I'll second. It's a good choice.
Thank you.
Speeds, speeds.
We have a motion, motion by Ms. Byby, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve Shelley Reed as a new planning commissioner. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Come on up, Shelley, for a minute. Say a couple of words. You know, Shelley's been around for, for some time now, and, and she was asking me a long time ago, how do I get on a commission or a board? And I said, well, if you hang around us long enough, you'll get appointed to something, which is not true. She's very, very well-rounded in her education, in what she's done in the past in the City of Sparks. Shelley, I believe you'll do a great, great job on the planning commission. We're looking forward to working with you. So say a few words, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilwoman, for this opportunity. I'm very honored, and it's my privilege to serve this community that I love so much. So thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Any questions from everybody? Any questions? Okay, let's move on to nine point two. Consideration of demand letter from Omar Rosales and possible action to settle claim against city in the amount of not to exceed insurance policy limits. Mr. Thornley?
Our members of the council, Doug Thornley. Well, that's generally a good sign, isn't it? As you mentioned, this is a, this is a council request to make a decision on a demand letter from a plaintiff's attorney on behalf of a man named Omar Rosales. His claim involves the failure of a concrete utility pole box and sidewalk along Victorian Avenue during rib cook-off in two thousand and fifteen. City Attorney's Office review of the claim leads us to recommend that the council deny the, the request. That's it. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. I don't know.
Questions for Doug? Mr. Lawson?
I'm going to recuse myself from this item because the lawyer for the plaintiff is someone I have a consultation with tomorrow, and we may be employing him to represent my wife. So I, better I just stay away from this item altogether.
Make a motion based on to reject Omar Rosales's demand of the City of Sparks policy limit of one million dollars per occurrence and a five million dollar umbrella.
Mr. Dare? Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Dare to decline item nine point two, Mr. Rosales's demand letter. Any questions for discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes four to one with one abstention. Thank you, Mr. Thornley. Do not come back ever again, okay? Nine point three. Discussion and possible direction to the city manager to negotiate and prepare a disposition and development agreement with Silverwing Development for the prospective sale and redevelopment of C Street Parking Facility property located at nine fifty-five C Street and having assessor's parcel number.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini, members of the city council. I'm Armando Ornella, the Assistant Community Services Director. Silverwing Development, which is led by Mr. Jay Witt, is requesting a disposition and development agreement, a DDA, in order to continue pursuing a proposed project four and the acquisition of the parking structure property located at nine fifty-five C Street. I have that graphic, please. As you can see, the, on the graphic up on the screen, the garage is on the north side of that, that parcel. It is located basically just one block east of Pyramid on, on C Street. It was built in nineteen eighty-eight, so it's approaching thirty years of age, and it has three hundred and forty-one parking spaces in it. This agenda item asks the city council to direct the city manager to proceed with negotiating and preparing for future consideration by the redevelopment agency and the city council in agreement with Silverwing Development for the sale and redevelopment of this property. Silverwing's preliminary proposal for the property is to retain the existing parking structure but add another parking level, a podium, and then five stories of apartments, totaling approximately one hundred and seventy-five units on top of that. So the, the end result would be a ten-story structure. Sure, I apologize for going through it so quickly. Basically, it'd be, they'd be looking at retaining the existing structure, adding another deck of parking, and then a podium above that on which, which would serve as the, you know, essentially the, the base for five stories of apartments on top. And so the, the project would be in total about ten stories and would contain one hundred and seventy-five apartments approximately. Sure. Basically, what's being contemplated is that in, in exchange for the garage and what would be the compensation for the, the city or the redevelopment agency would be a, a long-term lease for a certain number of, of spaces in that garage that would be available for the public's use. So we don't have that number yet. It would be something that would be worked out in this period if you give the manager direction to proceed, to work on this DDA. But that is what, that's what is being contemplated, and basically value of the lease hold on those spaces, and that the developer would be responsible for all maintenance on that, on, on those spaces. maintenance on that, uh, on, on those spaces. Um, a DDA, you know, they're all, they're all a little different, uh, but they all share some similarities, and so, the DDA would be expected to address, uh, topics that include, but are not limited to compensation for the property, so that would be based on, um, a summary and review appraisals, and if it's, if has contemplated the compensation is to take the form of a long-term or permanent access for the public of parking spaces in the garage, then the DDA that we would bring you would have to specify the terms, uh, for those spaces, in terms of the city's right to use the parking. Uh, possible modifications to the boundaries of the property, as you are aware, uh, in, in the previous projects that we have done in Victorian Square with, uh, Silverwing Development, we've had to do easements, um, you know, boundary line adjustments, et cetera, so, we don't know necessarily that that would be the case here, but it's, if there are any to be, that will be necessary, then we would address them in the DDA. Uh, the, uh, the DDA would, uh, identify what the roles and responsibilities would be, uh, of each of the parties regarding the mitigation of any environmental issues if, if they should arise, we don't know that they, they would, uh, but again, we have to anticipate the possibility. Uh, the term of the proposed DDA and performance schedules for each of the parties, uh, the developers' conditions precedent, and conditions precedent essentially are the developers' conditions to, that have to be satisfied before they would agree to, you know, take the property, and then conversely, uh, the DDA would specify, uh, any city and agency conditions precedent, and those would be the conditions that the agency and the city would want to see satisfied before you, we actually, uh, close on the sale of the property, and they could include, uh, you know, we'd want to have, basically what we're trying to do with the agency's conditions precedent would be to, um, you know, reduce to the extent possible, the, the possibility that, you know, we, we sell the property and then, and then the project doesn't proceed, so we would be looking to make sure that the project is, is as well-understood as possible, so we would be looking for the project to have an entitlement, uh, we would be looking for, uh, perform a development and operating budgets that demonstrate that the project is feasible, uh, and we would be looking for financing commitments for construction of the proposed project. So, that's sort of a, a short list of what would be addressed in the DDA, again, once we're into it, you know, that's subject to change. So, uh, the reason this item is on the city council meeting agenda rather than on the redevelopment agency agenda is that, uh, this property is owned by the city of Sparks. Now, it's, it's, um, in all likelihood, this has, uh, been transferred originally from the agency to the city, we'll do that research as, as part of, uh, the work we will do in, in the coming months, um, but, um, i- at this time, it is, it is owned by the city of Sparks, so, um, if the city council today directs, uh, the city manager to proceed with the pursuit of this DDA, uh, one of the steps that would have to occur before we can bring you the DDA, or certainly before you could approve the DDA, would be that the city would have to transfer a title to the agency, because the agency can dispose of, of, of property in a manner that the city, uh, can't necessarily. So, uh, per NRS 279, 432, you know, it's, it's clear that the city may dedicate, sell, convey, or lease any of its property to a redevelopment agency to aid redevelopment. Once a draft DDA has been prepared, it would be brought to the city council and the agency, uh, for approval, or for consideration, since the DDA would represent the agency's conditional agreement to sell Silverwing the property, it would be at that point that we would, uh, need to, uh, do the, um, uh, the public hearing where, um, you know, you would consider the actual disposition of the property, and, uh, when the agency is disposing a property, then the city council has to give its consent per, pertinent matter of redevelopment law, so, those public hearings will occur, and, you know, any, you know, will be notifying property owners, and so, anyone who may have any concerns about the disposition of the garage, you know, would have that, their opportunity to address the council at that point. So, that concludes my presentation, uh, Mr. Witt is in the audience, if you wish to hear from him or have questions for him.
Let's open it up for questions from the council, then we'll get Mr. Witt down here to say a few words, and, uh, go from there, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How many parking spaces do we have there now?
Uh, 341 spaces.
Many added parking space with that, the new floor?
Well, it would be, uh, there's approximately 70 to 80 spaces, depending on the, on the handicap spacing per, per floor, um, so we, you would assume approximately that more spaces.
Over 400 we'd have?
Yeah, I mean, there, there, there is some discussion potentially at looking at added that way, uh, we don't know whether that, you know, that makes sense or not, we'll look at it as part of the process, but that's what we're looking at approximately. Councilman Smith?
My only concern is, with 175 additional units, as we know in the past, that could mean 250 cars.
So, what we are looking at, uh, Councilman Smith, is, um, making sure that the, that this project is, is parked not just to code, but, uh, as necessary to satisfy its demand for parking, uh, and then looking at having some, some number of spaces in that garage that would be available, uh, for public parking, uh, most particularly to serve, you know, those businesses that have relied on that garage historically, on those two blocks on, on Victorian Avenue, uh, but, you know, we are looking at that in the context of, uh, the overall, uh, parking in that area, uh, you know, we have, uh, um, we had a traffic consultant do a parking analysis for all of the Victorian Square area, and we will be addressing that with you, or reviewing that with you when we, when we bring a DDA to you, if that's in fact what we do.
And, and I know we'll have plenty of parking there, just, the only time it's full is when we have a special event down there, otherwise, there's, there's plenty of parking spaces, but, uh, I'm watching that guy up there in the back, because he's, he's sneaky. He's sneaky good, and, uh, every project he's building, uh, is absolutely fantastic, so, thank you.
Mr. Dair?
Yeah, I, I, it's pretty exciting what's happening down there, and I think the idea of a larger structure that goes up only adds to our downtown, and will, I think it'll add the, the flavor of what we're looking for. One of my biggest concerns actually have to do with right now, communication to the businesses, I've actually spoken to a few of them, and they've only heard rumors of what's happening, what are we doing now to communicate, maybe, maybe Mr. Witt actually has an answer to that, maybe he's doing something, but even the fact that we're talking all about it, some of them, one of the bars was, oh no, you're gonna shut that down, I'm on, I, and I, I said what I could to, to, to whatever, but I do think these businesses are watching and hearing things, and I just want to make sure, what are we doing to help make sure they understand that we, one, is not shutting down their parking, but, all that kind of stuff.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Steve Driscoll for the record. This is kind of the first step about communications. One, until we have a development agreement that has us starting to negotiate the fine points, but really isn't anything to talk about except rumor, if you will, so, if the council approves this today, communications with adjacent landowners becomes part of the negotiations and the plan, and to make sure that we're providing information timely to those who are a party to what's going on, and so the fact that nothing's happening until now is because we don't have anything to talk about. Um, we have, uh, a couple of wonderful concepts, um, that have, that are working on different pieces of property down there, once we get to this particular piece of having a DDA in place, that changes the game, and it changes our responsibilities to the adjacent property owners, so, um, depending on your action today, will depend on what the next step is, communication will be one of the largest parts of it.
Mr. Witt, can you come down maybe real quick? I just want to make a comment that, uh, I believe I'm the only one left other than maybe Mr. Driscoll and Teresa, and maybe Mr. Smith is here, I don't remember, but, that talked originally about what was gonna go on down there, and everybody talked about, needs to be high, it needs to be many, many stories, it's gotta be this, it's gotta be that. It's, to me, it's, it's, uh, it's kind of funny, it's evolved, it's evolved, it's evolved. I mean, it's high-rise construction, which is a different code, um, it requires, you know, basically, a 300-foot span crane, uh, which is three to 5,000 a day through the life of the project, uh, so there's a lot of other issues, but, that being said, I go back to your, your original comments, which are absolutely accurate, which is, you know, what is the one thing, if you want, if you have a, you have a defined area that you want it, uh, you want to create, um, a downtown and, and existence and a, and a really a, you know, outstanding place to, to either visit or live, uh, density is, is, is the driver of all those things. With density, uh, we get to things like, um, an urban grocery store, an urban drug, we get, we get to more, um, retail options, uh, we already have actually a number of very interesting parties interested in the Bridges and Fountain House Two retail areas, so, um, the more we, we could drive that, and that we could also drive a higher-quality tenant, um, and, and with this project, we also bifurcate the market a bit in that, you know, we're not going after the same type of tenant on all these projects, this project, you're really gonna start up at the fifth level, which is gonna have two, uh, decks looking south, um, over the garage of the Nugget, so you have unobstructed views to south, so you're taking advantage of the, basically, the whole Sierra front on your views, um, that, that works also for the, for the common area, the outdoor space, and kind of the higher-end units we could put in here, so we're actually trying to graduate a little bit to, to a different type of, um, to, um, tenant in this, this development. Don't get me wrong, I like criticizing anybody, but I like to make some money, okay, that's not my technique. Yeah. Not being a 30-year banker, I would hope to God that, uh, that's what we need, to make some money in this project. I criticize anybody, I didn't mean... No, 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 I understand. I, I, I mean, so, when you, when you go up, you know, when you get, when you're pregnant on one building going up, when you, when you do Fountain House, which was 10 buildings and Clubhouse, and the market collapsed after building three, you, you could stop at that point and wait for the market to come back. When you go, when you, when you move on this project, you're all in. Yeah, so the risk, risk level's a lot higher, you're also carrying your debt for a lot longer before you're able to occupy, because we need, as, as the, as, as Vire Marshall King will, will tell you, um, we'll, we'll need a CO on the entire, entire building before the first party can occupy, uh, not just a building, but the entire buildings, and, oh, so, it, it's a different, it's a different dynamic, um, that we're bringing to, to the marketplace, uh, I'm excited about it, I think we're trying to basically, again, offer, uh, a different type of product for the, for folks to, to live and, and enjoy that area, um, and we are considering, to, to your point, um, Councilman DeHart, um, you know, we will be talking to the, uh, when, I actually had a meeting with Councilman Abbott earlier, uh, we will be talking to the local merchants, but as, um, city manager said, uh, they would be a little bit, a little bit cart before the horse, since we hadn't had this discussion yet before you, so, uh, that, that obviously is in my plan, um, but, you know, it just hasn't taken place, place yet. I, I applaud you, sir, for, uh, taking a chance on Sparks, because this is risky business, and, uh, you know, there's no doubt about that, but, thank you so much for making the investment that you're making now, and, uh, or going to in the future, I'm pretty sure, so, uh, discussions are ongoing for what's gonna happen in the future, I, I can't see this being any, anything but the best place to be in the next four or five years, uh, it's gonna be a wonderful, wonderful place to live, not only live, but come down and recreate. That's certainly my vision. Mr. Lawson?
Depending on the parking, if you've gone to any other, uh, regional cities, maybe directly to the west of us, finding parking is dang near impossible.
Right.
A little closer west Sparks, but, uh, yeah, finding parking is horrendous if you want to go down and have a meal, or catch a movie, or anything in, in downtown Reno, so, parking is crucial to everything we're doing in downtown Sparks, so thank you for keeping that up, and I'm gonna hold your feet to the fire on the...
I, I know you will, and you're, and you're a lot bigger than me, so, um, I, I respect that, um, and it...
Put some motorcycle parking.
No problem. In that regard, though, I, I would, I would also ask you all, as we go through these, um, with staff, that we not just look at the individual project, but the overall game plan for that area and what it can accomplish, um, by example, if we do move to, to the next area, which is along the promenade, you know, our game plan there is to basically go down an entire level underneath your promenade, and put an underground garage in there, and then build that promenade back up on top with the buildings, so you won't see the parking, but that we'll be adding more parking, actually more than we need in that area, so to give a little fluff for, for retail needs, so, um, you know, it's, it's, it's really some of the parts, we have to be thinking of the, the entire area when we're doing these, doing these designs.
For downtown?
Definitely will be.
Yep, thank you.
Jay, I just want to applaud you for your vision on, uh, Victorian Square, as we're creating this district, um, as a council member and chair of the redevelopment agency, really, you know, my focus on downtown, and the priority for all of us on creating downtown, uh, we get to build it, I tell people that, we're building it from the ground up, which is super exciting, we're not taking an older part of town and trying to renovate, uh, we're building and creating it, and you're doing a lot of that, and, and I like this project in particular, because it is going up, and, um, looking at the, the design, um, the artecco-type style, the lighting, I think, lighting...
You're giving away all my secrets I haven't released yet.
Yeah, the architectural style, and the lighting, and lighting, you know, lighting has been a huge thing, uh, in your other properties, and our tree lighting, and just kind of, uh, creating this whole district, so that people, when they come down here, they know they're in a special district, and it's also making, this product will add a different dimension, so it won't look like every building downtown is the same, that each one is unique, and creates like, uh, more visual interest, and, um, adds to the, you know, to the beauty of downtown, I'm excited of what, what, what we will see, especially in the next five years, you know, to see what's created, thank you.
Mr. Abbott?
I just wanted to say, second everyone else, that's a great idea, I think it's gonna be a, a good use, it'll be interesting to see the DDA, and I'd like to make a motion, if we don't have any more comments. Um, I move to direct the city manager to negotiate and prepare for future consideration by the agency and city council a proposed, uh, 2017 DDA with Silverwing Development for the sale and redevelopment of the C Street Parking Facility property.
Second, Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Abbott, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve, agenda item 9.3 is outlined by staff, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Hello, anybody home? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, uh, good luck, Mr. Witt, you won't need it, you, you're, you're doing a hell of a job.
Take all the luck you want to give me, thank you.
Move on to 9.4, consideration and possible approval of an inter-local agreement, AC 53999, 99, between the city of Reno on behalf of the Reno Police Department, Washoe County on behalf of the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, and city of Sparks on behalf of the Sparks Police Department. Next, page... For the management and disposition of 2017 Justice Assistance Grant, JAG program award in the amount of $26,234, Chief Allen, go for it.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, a little bit different than we've done in the past, or over the last couple of years, I would just come to you saying that we have received $26,000 approximately dollars through the JAG funding, the federal government has changed their application process slightly, um, to where they want the inter-local agreement, and some assurances that the city attorney has already signed off on, um, as part of the grant application process, so to remind you, uh, of the process we'll go through today, and if approved, we'll actually apply for the grant, uh, we have once again determined that working in the collaborative, uh, partnership with Reno and Washoe County, um, that we will get the most funds than doing, or applying for these funds as an independent entity, so, every year we look at that as a region, figure out which way we are going to get the most money, um, using the JAG funds, and once again, this is the inter-local that's before you, allowing the city of Reno to manage the grant funds, of which, um, our portion is approximately $26,234. So what we have before you is an inter-local that I've already signed, the assurances that the city, uh, attorney has signed, and then just with your approval, the mayor will sign, and then we will move forward with the grant process, and it'll come back before you, uh, at a later time to, to formally accept the grant.
Next, chief, questions for the chief? Mr. Dair?
Not a question, I just moved to approve, and I think it's a test of work together, good job on that, I know. How long have we been doing that? It's been a long...
Long time.
Before you were born.
Before I was in the roles that I was in, that, that now require me to do this.
I'd say it's been going on for quite some time, so I...
At least for at least 10, 15 years, I know that for a fact.
I move to accept and approve the inter-local agreement with the city of Reno, Washoe County, and the city of Sparks for the management and disposition of the 2017 Justice Assistance Grant program award the amount of $26,234.
You have a second? Mr. Abbott? We have a motion by Mr. Dair, seconded by Mr. Abbott to approve 9.4, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thanks chief, appreciate it. 9.5, consideration, discussion, and possible adoption of a...
9.5, consideration, discussion, and possible adoption of a business impact statement, AC 5400, regarding Resolution Number 3317, amending and updating fees charged by the Fire Department of the City of Sparks for certain fire inspections, re-inspections, fire suppressions, and fire prevention services. Mr. King.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Robert King, Fire Marshal, for the record. Next month, I'll be before you to talk about fund stuff like Pancake Breakfast and Fire Prevention Week and golf fundraiser efforts and everything we have, but today is something that's a little different, but needed. So, and I heard your conversation earlier about glasses, this is actually the first time that I'm coming up to a presentation where I'm having to put readers on as well.
Maybe cheers, you're telling.
Yeah, okay. So as mentioned, you have before you today consideration to adopt a business impact statement regarding a new resolution, Number 3317, amending and updating our existing fees charged for fire inspections, re-inspections, fire suppression, and prevention services. A little background on this, the Fire Prevention Bureau's fee schedule was created in 1999 to cover the cost of services to hire one additional fire inspector. To this end, council passed Resolution 2578 on July 8, 1999, and Resolution 2735 on June 25, 2001, establishing and amending fees charged by the Sparks Fire Department. The Fire Prevention Bureau fee schedule has not been adjusted or increased since 2001. Since 2002, the Fire Department has averaged about $79,000 in inspection fee revenue per year, which is insufficient to cover the current cost of the fire inspector two position paid for by these fees. So in May of 2017, council approved fiscal year 18 budget, which included an increase of $60,000 in Fire Department fees for the fiscal year. So from May to June 2017, I was tasked to conduct a kind of a statewide comparison of inspection fees to see what's going on out there. The study demonstrated that the fees charged by Sparks Fire Department for fire inspection services were still well below the state average of about $80 per hour. The proposed fees accurately account for an inspector's time at $65 an hour. The addition of an operational permit fees required, that's required by the Fire Code, will also offset the actual cost of conducting fire inspections for specialized processes that take more time to review and inspect. Depending on the size of business, some fees increased while others actually decreased. And that's in your packet, where you can see that in the fee chart. The proposed fees are estimated to cover the annual cost to pay for that one fire inspector two position as originally intended under Resolutions 2578 and 2735. So pursuant to NRS 237.090, a business impact statement is required. From June to July 2017, I sent the proposed fee adjustment information to Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada, EDON, Spark Citizens Advisory Council, and the Reno Sparks Chamber of Commerce to solicit their input regarding the fee adjustments. On June 29, 2017, a notice was also placed in the Reno Gazette Journal. I received and responded to four comments from EDON, which is indicated in the business impact statement report that you have. So with that, I'm looking for your consideration to adopt the business impact statement, and we'll hopefully be able to answer any of your questions.
Questions for Chief King.
Sir, this is not the place for public comment, I'm sorry.
But if you have a question after the meeting, if you'll talk to our City Manager, he'll be able to help you out, get you the right spot. Okay. Any other questions from the council? Mr. Lawson.
So you're anticipating a $65 per hour inspection, that'll be the fee, and then, or the fee is in addition to the $65 per hour?
It is. The current fees that you see charged an hour change to $60,000. That is the fee for inspection, no matter what size of business, whether you can see how much it is.
And so if business, what can I... I'm like business, say, of mini-storage, what can I expect would be my total inspection costs?
For a mini-storage itself, it would more than likely, depending on the size of it, $65 an hour. If it's a small one, it'd be $65. If it's a very large one, it could take two hours. It could be double that. There are some businesses out there that have operational permits, which are specialized processes, you have to have a lot more knowledge in that to review them and inspect them. There'll be a fee for the permit on that, so that could be attached.
So the intent is to keep this person posted, building at $65 an hour, eight hours a day, five weeks, that type of thing?
Well, yes, but it, we, that'll go in place with four different inspectors that you have doing inspections as well.
Mr. Dare.
I'm looking at this, so before it was just a flat fee, am I right? It wasn't per hour? Because it's on here, I just want to, when we're looking at this, so on, it's $65 an hour here, and then over here says 50, 60, 70, but that wasn't per hour, that was just a fee?
It was per hour, but it wasn't based on the per-hour full-time equivalent of the person's position. That's what, that's how I readjusted it to make it where it's more accurately bringing in the revenue for the services provided.
Thing on the left is per hour as well. They just didn't say that, I'm just...
Per hour, just, it depended on the size of occupancy.
I have only question.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Murk. How many self-inspectors do we have on that business?
Self-inspection?
Self-inspectors themselves.
We would, it's around 1,200.
And what's the cost of that?
That would be $25 for...
$25?
Yes.
We put that in place, I know...
My wife was in business back then.
It's been...
Quite a few years, but we actually stopped it at one point before we did not charge for it, and we lost some personnel as well, and it was very hard to keep up with it at the time, so we stopped the self-inspection program, but we'd like to bring that back. And for the main reason of, then we feel like we are getting out to every business in the City of Sparks to ensure that they receive some type of fire and life safety inspection, even if it's them doing it themselves, because we provide them with all the information to do it. You own the forms and have them self-inspect. Is that one of the reasons why your revenue isn't covering the cost of the inspections? Is because of so many people that self-inspect?
No, sir, we did not charge for it before.
Even in the beginning? Okay, okay. Thanks, chief.
Ms. Bybee.
Does qualify for self-inspection?
Very good question. It's a business that is more of a low-risk type of business, such as a, just a business office, where when we go in and conduct an inspection, we're really, the only things we're looking at is an exit light, fire extinguishers, something very simple. So they're considered to us as a low-risk type of business. Medium-risk ones that have operations, factories, industrial, hazmat, those would fall under our...
Or fall under our...
Our language, a target hazard type of business, meaning you have much more possibility of something happening in those type of businesses, where you have a less probability in a low-risk business. And it's a type of business, then, that with our education, they could conduct that inspection themselves, and I still feel comfortable they'd be safe.
So do businesses know that? Is there like a category that you can go to that if I'm opening up an office or, you know, candy store or something, that those businesses would be aware at the time that they're opening or that they purchased a business, that that is an option for them to do self-inspection versus the, those who do need the $65 an hour, is it pretty clear-cut and do business, are businesses informed?
Actually, that would be something that I could place on our website along with, because we already have the self-inspection forms on the website where they can access them. I could also place that type of information right next to it. So when they do come in to get a business license, they can go right there and see kind of where they fall.
Do you have people that do self-inspection that really you find later were higher risk? I mean, is that an issue that they shouldn't have been doing self-inspection, that maybe they required for the safety, maybe should have been doing? Your fire inspectors, instead of them doing it themselves, has that an issue at all?
Well, I don't know, because we haven't gone back to a self-inspection business to see if it is. We have seen some information come in, or actually, if they don't send back in the self-inspection form, we will send out an inspector to the business to conduct inspection. Then they get charged the $65. We have found a couple of times that there were a few issues that we took care of on the spot, but we learn from that as we go as well.
Yeah.
Mr. Abbott.
Home-based business, classified as like a low-risk, is there anything like that? Not too many home-based businesses that we actually inspect, because they're usually just something more simple, like a, like a, hopefully not, like just a regular business. We do review all of them that come through our office, and we assess them at that time to see if it's something that we would put into an inspection program.
They use by themselves.
We would make that assessment at that time, yes.
Dare.
Great, we're in motion, please.
I move to adopt the business impact statement, link post-resolution 3317, amending inspection to 2578 and 2735, to fire department, fire inspection, re-inspections, fire protection, and fire prevention services.
Second, Mr. Smith. Second. Moved by Mr. Dare, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve Agenda Item 9.6, outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously, thanks, Bob, appreciate it. Okay, number 10, public hearing and action items unrelated to planning and zoning, I believe, Mr. Driscoll.
Notice on number 9.6, please.
Do we have to do that today?
Just let them know. There's no action, we're good to go.
Excuse me. 9.6, an exempt meeting will be held after the regular council and SRA, the Redevelopment Agency meetings adjourned between the council and management representatives for labor negotiations, out per NRS 288.220. Does that suffice?
Sir.
Now, number 10, Mr. Driscoll, I think you have an announcement on these.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. I have a special announcement related to 10-1 and 10-2 on Item 10, and I'll deal with them kind of at the same time. On Item 10.1, this is scheduled for a second reading. The first reading of Bill Number 2721 was held on August 14, and that a public hearing on that bill is scheduled for today. I am suggesting that it be rescheduled for your next regularly scheduled meeting, which is Monday, September 11. Also, on 10.2, the first reading of the Bill 2722 was held on August 14, and I'm also suggesting that the public hearing and second reading of this bill be conducted at your next regular meeting. However, based on our normal process, when we post for public hearing, I do suggest that you ask if there's any people that are here specifically on one of these two items or both, and allow them to have a choice as to whether they'd like to speak today or wait until we hear it on the 11th, or they do actually have the option, they could speak now and they could speak on the 11th. So that is my suggestion on these two items, please.
That individual area can do it together, on both items?
I think we need to do it individually.
Okay.
Open up for public hearing. We're in 20.
All right, thank you. All right, first, we're going to do, even though this will not be heard today, we are allowing for a public hearing because we have announced it as being a public hearing. So I'm going to open the public hearing on 10.1. Anyone like to speak to the council concerning Agenda Item 10.1? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to 10.2. I'll open the public hearing on 10.2. Anyone in the audience like to speak to 10.2 to the council? Okay, seeing none, I'll close 10.2, bring it back to the council. Any questions for the council?
Do we have to vote on it? It'll be next, please.
Can be taken on this item.
Oh, seeing no further discussion, we'll move to 11, planning. We have none, comments from the public. Anyone else in the public like to speak and their comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, we have comments from the City Council, City Manager, Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Steve Driscoll, again, for the record. I just wanted to again, since even though I dealt with the Landstar Company's request regarding the multifamily rezoning on Los Altos Parkway, I just want to announce again that we have been requested to extend the public hearing process that we had originally had communicated to the public would be during the month of September, the first and second readings related to that rezoning. The company has asked for a 60-day extension that would put the first and second readings at your meetings in November. Their reason was that they've brought on a new consultant to help work with, trying to answer some of the questions that have been raised by the homeowners in the area as it relates to the potential for this rezoning. This is very common for us, was very commonplace pre-recession, that we would work with applicants and help them along. There will be some public notification process that will be mailed out to those who would have regularly received mail related to this issue, and we'll do the best we can to communicate with those that have an interest in this as it comes back to you in November. I want to assure the public that the same exact process that was going to take place in September will take place in November. There will be no deals cut on the side, or no one will be cut out of the discussion. We're just allowing the developer to answer some questions that have been brought up in the public process so far. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Who else? Okay, seeing no further business, we are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of August 28, 2017, with a roll call. Chairperson Bybee. Here. Agency members Abbott.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Martini.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
Agency Acting Attorney Iting.
Here.
And Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to Item Number Three, public comment. Do I have any public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Moving to Item Number Four, approval of the agenda. Do I have any changes to the agenda or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Member Dare, seconded by Member Martini. Please vote. Item Number Five, minutes from the July 24, 2017 meeting, any corrections and additions or a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Member Martini. Do I have a second? Seconded by Member Smith. Please vote. Passed unanimously. Item Number Six, 6.1, report of claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period June 8, 2017 through August 9, 2017. Do I have a motion to approve?
Approve.
Moved to approve by Member Dare.
Second.
Seconded by Member Martini. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Come on, Martini. Get with the program. There you go.
Passed unanimously. Item Number Seven, do I have any comments from the public? Seeing none, do I have any comments from the agency or Chief Administration Officer? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Vote.
Motion by Member Martini, seconded by Member Abbott. Lawson, anyway, we are adjourned.